I can't tell you it was in charge.
(coughs)
Yeah.
Nice.
Really, yeah.
Nice.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the San Lena Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Ms. Camaro, I believe we're ready for the roll call.
Commissioner Monet? Here. Commissioner Hale?
Here.
Vice Chair Pont?
Here.
Chair Hardy?
Here.
And Commissioner Anderson is currently absent?
I think that's a safe bet right now. That brings us to the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on matters that are not on our agenda, which means that we can't offer any opportunity to raise any issue that's on your mind and is not on our agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address us at the public forum? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum and move on to... That's the approval of the minutes for October 1st, 2019. Matter on consent calendar be pulled from consent for discussion?
I'd like to request that we pull the minutes, if you please.
Very good. Commissioner Pont is... Of the minutes of October 1st, 2019, and for... A full complement of commissioners. Welcome. So, Commissioner Pont?
My concern is with item 5.2, the last paragraph. It'll actually allow... Approval of the project. One, we didn't direct the staff. We just didn't take any action at all on the project. And two, we certainly didn't direct approval. And my main concern is with the word approval. It implies an action we didn't take. It implies that the commission endorsed the project. And I'd hate to do that. For example, if let's... I don't know where the project is now, but let's say the project is rejected and then comes back to us on appeal. We're already on record as endorsing the project. That's a problem on appeal. So, I would suggest that be reworded to say administrative review, administrative action, but certainly not approval.
Any...
I would... You know, I hear what you're saying. I know there was a majority of the commission that did it was okay with this project, but that's neither here nor there. I would really like to be able to look at the tape. You know, if this is... If, you know...
The commission can only speak if the commission takes a vote.
Right.
We did not take a vote. Right? Secondly, if this comes saying that we direct...
The administration approval?
Direct the staff, proceed to administrative approval of the project.
I think that was their approval, the administrative.
Administrative action, administrative review.
That's their action. Because that's what we did. We said, "Go ahead and do..." Because that's what I think administrative action is, is the planning department.
Yeah.
So, I think that's what... Exactly what we did.
It's just as the commission...
But, you know, I don't remember, you know?
I have trouble with the word approval.
But it's the administrative approval, not our approval.
My memory is generally poor, but I'm pretty sure that this came up in...
What was taken?
Closing remarks, as it were, from the chair. And that I looked to the acting director to confirm that, given our decision as a commission, that the project was not... I do agree with Commissioner Pont that it was not a commission action as such, but I think a review of the tape would reflect the fact that there was some confirmation simply in a... An exchange...
Changing the word approval to review fixes the issue?
I would entertain a motion to correct the minutes as discussed.
Move the min...
Ms. Camaro?
Vice Chair Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner And...
That brings us to our public hearings. And the first item on the agenda is 5.0. Excuse me. I'm looking at the minutes instead of tonight's agenda. It is 5.1, but the... Involves an application for design review and a demolition permit. And I believe, Mr. Guston, that this is your staff report to present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This item was originally heard on June 18th of this year. And during the course of the public hearing, the applicant was directed to come back with some additional information. She had submitted some information to staff that we believe represented what the planning commission requested. We at the staff level have no additional information, but the applicant is here. And the information that she has is on a larger scale than I can see on the reductions. So, with that, we'll turn it back to the commission, to the applicant, to present. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Or should we... Would the applicant please present the project?
Is this on? Yeah. So, just a quick inter... Stockton Street. We originally presented on June 18th, as was stated. And I want to thank the planning staff for their continued support of our project, which I believe is pretty straightforward. The surrounding properties and neighborhood. And, you know, we put together a bit of a street scape...
It doesn't go on the record.
It shows the proposed street elevation in relation to the neighboring properties. You know, we have a group of neighbors that have complained that they don't support the project. I have to say, I... They don't seem to have much specific that they want to discuss. It's kind of just a roadblock at this point. I've reached out to them. I've explained our design limitations, given the lot size, given the setback requirements, that I don't feel a single-story house makes sense, you know, for livability and, you know, daylight and basically what I think would make for a nice house. I've offered to move the pool equipment, which was one specific complaint. Of course, I have no problem with that. We don't... For anybody. The overwhelming feeling... Opposing construction in general. And I understand that can be disruptive to a neighborhood. But, you know, some of their complaints are that the street is narrow. I, you know, would plan to work with a local builder. Of course, we're going to follow all the rules for any construction that we would be doing and try to make it as minimally... Thing, I think that the new house would improve the neighborhood. It is a very... There are not a lot of two-story houses on that... You go down a block, there's a ton. You go up a block, there's a ton. It's just what it is, you know? It's not a historical property. I would venture to guess most of the other ones aren't either, but of course, I'm not an expert in that. So, you know, I just feel that as a taxpaying private property owner who has spent years and tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars going through this process and meeting all of these procedures, that it's just really hard to think that a group of neighbors writing emails can derail this whole thing for me and my family. So, that's all I have to say.
Don't go away just yet. We may have some questions for you. Is there anyone besides myself who has questions for the applicant? Yes. We will have the opportunity to go back to staff, certainly.
This is still a two-story house, right?
It will be a two-story... Yes, as proposed, it's a two-story house.
Okay, thanks.
...relate to your communications with staff? Have you... And did you be... ...review criteria would be and how they apply? What kind of communication have you had with staff about that?
Hmm. Um... City Hall, when we first started designing and asked what the whole process was, I was probably referred to the building code, which my architect obviously, you know, looked at and design planning guidelines. And our design meets them all. There was never, at any point, anyone who said, "Your neighbors might be able to oppose this."
Yes. Well, I'm really just asking about how you were informed about the design review guidelines.
I'm not sure I understand your question. Design review guidelines? What is... How this process works or...
No, it's not the process. The guidelines are the part of the ordinance that the...
That it should fit in with the city?
Planning commission... They're really the key to what we do when we review the project.
Okay. I don't remember having specific discussions about that.
Would that have been your architect who had a discussion like that?
Possibly. I mean, I've been through design review guidelines, like... So, I didn't feel that we were unfamiliar with. You're welcome.
If you could, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You seemingly went as much as three blocks to the east, but... About why you're now... What's going on here?
To be completely honest, that's a map that I had, and I didn't go get a different parcel map. I think it's pretty... I mean, I know... I did... I mean, I have walked the other side of the street many times, across the street. They are single-story homes. I wasn't trying to misrepresent anything. I just thought it was a representation of the neighborhood.
Yeah. But...
That's what the... Yeah, that's, you know, what I was given to me on... From my title report that I had to produce for the application.
I would think across the street would be part of just about anybody's neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay.
So, with that information across the street... This is being complete, accurate, whatever. I'm also curious about your outreach to the neighbors.
Yeah. I emailed them. I only had their email addresses from their communications to me. So... And some of them don't live on the street, the people who have... So, I emailed out to them and I gave them a lengthy, warm... I mean, I can read you the email. I don't think everyone wants to hear it, but... And asked them to please contact me if they had any questions. That's all. I mean, I... And basically, didn't... And then dropped me off the email after that.
Thank you.
Any other question? Are there questions for staff?
Yeah, I've... I guess if I were to ask you what neighborhood this is... My understanding is this is in the, you know, the downtown neighborhood district, you know, because we have 24 designated neighborhoods. And the general plan, you know, defines that with edges and, you know, if I were to, you know, describe this, I mean, I can... You know, the downtown residential neighborhood roughly runs from Madrona to Spring to Hudson, oozes a little past Hudson, then goes to Oak and crosses over Oak and squeezes out along Main to about Pratt. And then there's a little... Another piece on the other side that kind of squarely sits on Edwards. That's all considered a neighborhood by definition. That is the neighborhood technically. I mean, if we look for definition of neighborhood, you know, I can understand that it's... Can be...
Neighborhood?
That's what Figure 7.1 in the general plan says. Okay. The house is currently a non-conforming house, right? And its setbacks are, you know, roughly five feet on the left and five feet on the right. I mean, as you're facing it. And then the new setbacks of the house are basically 10 feet from the left and right and then the upper floor... Roughly 15 feet back. I mean, that's a rough number, eyeball kind of number. But judging by the dotted line that shows the outline of the second floor superimposed on the first floor, I just want to confirm that the setback upstairs is further... Is greater in some places than the downstairs?
That's all correct, sir.
Okay. And then, if you can just speak to the footprint, the way I look at it, of the existing versus the proposed footprint on the lot, you know, the front's rough... Back. And then the back may kick out a little, but it's roughly... Roughly similar in terms of just lot coverage. I don't know if... Did you guys pull out a... I mean, the lot coverage...
That's correct. The front setback is 22 foot 10, where 20 is required. The sides are existing around five feet and proposed would be 10 feet on both sides per code. Is going to be proposed. And the lot coverage is...
Any other questions for staff? I have a couple. First is... For ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Hardy. So, there aren't... Ex the planning commission to consider. So, they're not specified findings, they're criteria.
And are those in the staff report?
They are.
Both in the report and in the resolution.
Very good. That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure everyone was aware. And then, my follow-up question is whether there are required findings for denial?
So, in the design review code section 17164040, under limitations of review, subsection C states that only the proponents' failure to take reasonable account of items discussed in section 17164010 through 17164030, which are the required or the design review criteria that the planning commission are to consider, shall justify the commission's disapproving of a proposal solely on the basis of design.
Thank you.
Can you translate that, please? That means that we don't need to have findings to deny, that we can use the...
No. There's no required finding for approval, but there is a required finding for denial. The required finding for denial...
The criteria.
Failed to take reasonable account of the items discussed in 010 through 030, which are the sections that lay out the purpose. And the way it's worded, it's a little bit funny, but in effect, the... Are all criteria that were to consider in approving design review and only the applicant's failure to take reasonable account of them is an allowed basis for denial. You're welcome. So, with that done, I'll open the public hearing and invite members of the public to speak.
I guess I'm part of the gang. I'm Carolyn Kilparis. I live at 1615 Main Street. I own 1421 Stockton and 1612 Stockton.
Um, why you're now. What was going on here?
To be completely honest, that's a map that I had and I didn't go get a different parcel map. I think it's pretty, I mean, I know. I did, I mean, I have walked the other side of the street many times, across the street. They are single-story homes. I wasn't trying to misrepresent anything. I just thought it was a representation of the neighborhood.
But.
Yeah. That's what the, yeah, that's, you know, what I was given to me on from my title report that I had to produce for the application.
I would think across the street would be part of just about anybody's neighborhood.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so with that information across the street, this is being complete, accurate, whatever. I'm also curious about your outreach to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I emailed them. I, I only had their email addresses from their communications to me. So, and some of them don't live on the street, the people who have, um. So I emailed out to them and I gave them a lengthy, warm, I mean, I can read you the email. I don't think everyone wants to hear it, but, um, and asked them to please contact me if they had any questions. That's all. I mean, I, and basically didn't. And then dropped me off the email after that.
Thank you. Any other question? Are there questions for staff?
Yeah, I've, I guess if I were to ask you what neighborhood this, this. Um, my understanding of this is, this is in the, you know, the downtown neighborhood district, you know, because, because we have 24 designated neighborhoods. And the general plan, you know, defines, defines that with, with edges and, you know, if I, if I were to, you know, describe this, I mean, I can. You know, the downtown residential neighborhood roughly runs from Madrona to Spring, uh, to Hudson, oozes a little past Hudson, um, then goes to Oak and crosses over Oak and squeezes out uh, along Main to about Pratt. And then there's a little, another piece on the other side, uh, that kind of squarely sits on Edwards. That's all considered a, a neighborhood. Um, by, by definition, that is the neighborhood. Um, technically, I mean, if we look, if we look for definition of neighborhood, you know, I, I can understand that. It's can be. Neighborhood.
That's what figure seven point one in the general plan says.
Yes, okay. Um. The, the house is currently a non-conforming house, right? And its setbacks are, you know, roughly five feet on the left and five feet on the, on the right. I mean, as, as you're facing it. And then the new setbacks. Of the house are basically 10, 10 feet from, from the left and right, and then the upper floor. About roughly 15 feet back. I mean, that's a rough number, eyeball kind of number, but judging by the, the dotted line that shows the outline of the second floor, uh, superimposed on the first floor, I just want, I just want to confirm that the setback upstairs is, is further, is, is greater in some places than the downstairs.
That's all correct, sir.
Okay. And then, um, if you can just speak to the, the footprint, the way I look at it, of the existing versus, uh, the proposed footprint on the lot, um, you know, it, the front's rough. Back, uh, and then the back may kick out a little, but it, but it's, uh, roughly, roughly similar in terms of just lot coverage. I don't know if, did you guys pull out a, I mean, the lot cover.
That's correct. Um, the front setback is 22 foot 10, uh, where 20 is required. The sides are existing around five feet and proposed would be 10 feet on both sides per code. Is going to be proposed and the lot coverage is.
Thank. Any other questions for staff? I have a couple. Um, first is. For your ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Hardy. So there aren't. Ex the planning commission to consider. Um, so they're not, they're not specified findings, they're, they're criteria.
And are those, uh, in the staff report?
Uh, they, they are.
Both in the report and in the resolution.
Ah, very good. That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure everyone was aware. Uh, and then my follow-up question is whether there are required findings for denial.
So in, uh, in the design review code section 17164040, under limitations of review, subsection C states that only the proponents' failure to take reasonable account of items discussed in section 17164010 through 17164030, which are the required or the, uh, design review criteria that the planning commission are to consider, um, shall justify the commission's disapproving of a proposal solely on the basis of design.
Thank.
Translate that, please. That means that, um.
That means.
Don't need to have findings to deny. We can use the.
No, it, it, uh, there's no required finding for approval, but there is a required finding for, uh, denial. The required finding for denial.
The criteria.
Right to the wording. Failed to take reasonable account of the items discussed in 010 through 030, which are the sections that lay out the purpose.
Thank you.
And, and the way it's worded, it's a little bit funny, but in effect, the. Are all criteria that were to consider, um, uh, in approving design review and, and only the applicant's failure to take reasonable account of them is an allowed basis for denial.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that done, I'll open the public hearing and invite members of the public to speak.
I guess I'm part of the gang. I'm Carolyn Kilparis. I live at 1615 Main Street. I own 1421 Stockton and 1612 Adams Street. Um, I feel somewhat at a disadvantage that it's been four and a half months since we had the previous hearing and I don't feel previous hearing. What I really focused on was the fact that Stockton. Neighborhood and that the street is so narrow that parking is only allowed on one side of the street. I also had done a walking survey. And looked at the height of all the houses and did a survey, which I've given. When I started reviewing for tonight's hearing, it struck me that this parcel map. Neighborhood is who you live next to and who you live across from, not who lives two blocks behind. Uh, I realize there's a lot of two-story houses in St. Helena and they're on, most of them are on wider streets except for the large houses on Stockton Street near Spring. Excuse me. I recall at a meeting several years ago where the size of a proposed dwelling in relation to the surrounding dwellings was being discussed. I don't honestly remember if it was a planning commission or a city council appeal, but one of the then representatives, none of you, made the remark that this, that particular project, which was not on Stockton Street, they didn't want to Stockton-ize the new neighborhood by building those big houses next to small houses. And that's my whole point. My houses have been there for like 65 years. Others have been there. Of Stockton Street between Adams, especially. Think there should be any. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission on this matter? I do have. Probably should know and, and perhaps Mr. Guston, you're the best person to answer, but this. If at our last meeting, the general, new general plan had yet been adopted. Preferences in the staff report are to the new general plan or to its predecessor.
The staff report was written to the predecessor general plan because that was in effect when the application was deemed complete in January of this year. And the general plan was not adopted by the city council until May.
Very good. Thank you. Well, um, before, uh, opening things up to the commission discussion, I, uh, I do think it's important, um, especially because obviously the project, uh, comes to us with some measure of controversy that, that we consider what these criteria in the design review ordinance are. Um, everyone's got them in the packet, uh, in the staff report. And again, there are, are two lists. One is. Is A through F. Well, I'm looking at it just in a copy of the ordinance. Um, and I don't know that the purpose got. I think, no, it's the next section. It's 030. So let me just. The purpose of design review is A, to promote those qualities in the environment which bring value to the community. B, to foster the attractiveness and functional utility of the community as a place to live and work. C. Areas which have a discernible character or are of specific, special historic significance. Where appropriate, a mix of uses within permissible use zones and F, to raise a level of community expectations for the quality of its environment. I bring those up simply because the first part of 030 says, in addition to the purposes prescribed in the preceding section, the following factors shall be considered by the planning commission in reviewing all applications. And that's really how it's set out. We get a list of things to consider. We're not directed as to how to weight them. They're not a set of findings that require, um, that we be able to make each and every, uh, finding. Uh, it's different from that. It's really just a list of things for us to consider. Um, and that list then goes on one through 14. List bringing this up. I see that B says that we shall develop additional criteria. Ordinance 07 dash four. So, um. Uh, newer. Design review guidelines, but in any event, um, that's what the ordinance tells us to do, to con. Add then, um, I'll invite the commission to begin its deliberations. Who would like to start? That's unusual.
Okay, I'll start. Um, in looking through, you know, after, after, uh, after C, design review, the criteria, when I, when I go down that list, um, I think, um, in kind of working up to this, this, and we've obviously seen it a couple of times, uh, some of the interpretation of this comes, does come down on neighborhood, um, or, or your definition of neighborhood. If I broad brush paint two interests here, the, the two interests want to frame it differently, uh, or, or in alternate ways. Uh, and I think, I, I see this, this happens a lot in, in St. Helena. Um, and one of the. Full things I think about St. Helena is, is the sort of wild variation and inconsistency uh, within, within, uh, our neighborhoods as defined in the general plan and, and just in. Two. So I, uh. Effective to sort of cherry pick, uh. That I've, that I find, um, you know, biased toward, toward one side or the other. And I have to, I have to. Before us and I, uh, I don't have a. Run, uh, it's a pretty risky business when we start, um, allowing, uh, what, what boils down to sort of mob rule. Want to do this, I want to do that. Uh, we have, we have to make decisions based on, on how the, how the rules apply and, and even if they are fuzzy, we're charged with figuring out, um, what that means and then making a decision. I. This commission or, or the rules don't require that neighbors, uh, speak to each other or negotiate things. Uh, I think it's, it's, it's nice when they can, uh, but it's, but it's not required. Um, you know, I think it's better when that's done, uh, in a non-coercive way. Uh, I think part of our job is to not throw out, uh, pitchforks and crowbars for neighbors in the next set of neighbors to be. In demanding this or that they do that. I mean, I, I think this is a. Majority of the ones with, um, with letters even are, are, are existing non-conforming situations. You know, I, I look at this and I think, well, the, uh, this new project is being held to a. It's the current standard. Um, you know, where the setbacks are, are further on the sides than when these other ones were built. Uh, the, the systems are going to be, uh, by code or, or. Uh, you know, so I, I get a little, uh, and, and sure, I can, I'm sympathetic to. No kid that just loves to see the, you know, and hear the bangs and, but I, but there's no, there's no rule against, there's, there's rule, there's. Start before that and, and those, there's a controlling authority that, that controls those. I, you know, I, I, I find this project generally is, uh, is well conceived and, you know, I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see the neighbors be able to get back together after, after this, but I, I can't control that. And that's not part of my, my job. That's, that's your all's next project, you know? And I, and I hope you do come together. You know, I, I think a lot of times these, hopefully these blow over and, but I, I can't find a, uh, a re. Within its limits. I can't, uh, speak against it. I, I find, I think it's a, I support it. So.
Commissioner Potte?
We have two essentially opposing views. Uh. Uh, so I, I don't think somebody coming out and saying yes, and somebody else coming out and saying no, uh. Objectionable action, but we. Unfortunately, some of the facts are missing. I don't know what it's like across the street. And I would be, I would consider across the street, uh, the immediate environment of the site, um, under design criteria, uh, A2. So, looking at what I do have, um, I don't think this one meets A2, where you have a whole string of one-story small bungalows ranging from about 1,000 square feet to about 1,200 square feet. Um, I don't think this is compatible with the immediate environment of the site. Um, but that's the. It couldn't also not meet number four, determination that the design is compatible and areas considered by the board as having a unified historical character. We have made no decision on that point, but I would say in a whole neighborhood of one-story small. Still missing the facts, uh, that a two-story house would stand out like a sore thumb. So in general. That it is, meets the. Factor, but we've got a lot of people saying that's a very important factor to them. And frankly, we're reactive to the. Objection comes from the public and fits the rules.
Thanks. Um, the compatibility of design with the immediate environment of the site is the only thing that stuck out to me as well. Um, there are no other two-story homes on that block and it is very different from the examples that we were given that are on neighboring streets. I didn't feel those really represented the situation fairly.
Commissioner Minat?
Well, um, okay, I, the first design review criteria mentions the general plan and. Yeah, with strength in community identity, the wording in the general plan is in, in 4.3.4 is strengthen community identity. And then on 7.5.1, historic and cultural resources, preserve. Those imply the opinions of the people, of the citizens. And so, you know, it's not. The code, but it also, that's what we're here for is to see if it is compatible with the general plan. And I don't feel it is with those two numbers because, um, it's at this point not strengthening the community. Um, it's, there, it's, there's a, there's from people who have spoken and sent in letters. And there's a scent of, you know. Mentioning that because I think it's really important to realize that the voice of the community is really, is really part of the whole process as Commissioner Pont was saying. And it's certainly part of. See, um, it, I don't, I really don't feel that it'd be. General plan in that sense, that the sense that I just brought up. Um, and number two under design review, I feel that the, um, historical reference there, is that where it is? Um, and, and in the other ones is a general, is a general use of the word historic. I don't think that, that they're necessarily talking only about, um, buildings that have been designated as historical. Here of a neighborhood and so forth. Um, it's, you know, I've been here 43 years, maybe longer than anyone else here. Um, but you know, historically, it was, there weren't these big two-story houses on that block. I mean, there are a few there, but not on that block. So I, I find that number one and number two, um, they don't fit for me. And, um, I think it's too big for that small lot. And it's possible that the other two-story houses on that block are too big for the lots, but it's. And, um, I already said about the historical character, which is number four. And then number six, that's really important to me too. Uh, compatibility with future construction because. Compatibility with future construction because part of the reason that there are, there has been the Stockton, Stockton homes and new homes were allowed in the past and it doesn't really affect the future. That was the argument for that criteria. It's also a finding when we're using findings. And I think lots with not very, you know, with inadequate parking on the streets and surrounding houses being the approval of future-like projects. And it, I think, will erode the character of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhoods throughout St. Helena that started out anyway as, you know, bungalow-type, small places, small homes. So I'm identifying one, two, three, four, and six as criteria that I cannot support, partly based on 4.3.4 in the general plan and 7.5.1 in the general plan.
Thank you. Well, I agree with everyone that the compatibility of design with the immediate environment of the site is problematic. I disagree about, with respect to some of the views that have been and what these criteria mean and what the general plan means by neighborhood. Figure 7.1, I think it is, that Commissioner Hale discussed earlier. If you'd asked me 10 years ago if St. Helena had 24 neighborhoods, I think I would have scoffed at the notion. What neighborhood means in the city and how that should be applied to design review clearly has changed over time. And that's reflected in the that map one of the largest and most diverse neighborhoods in the city. So I don't think this project poses a real problem in terms of compatibility with a larger neighborhood, where I think diversity of architectural styles has long been one of the appealing features. I do think, as I say, that it poses some real challenges with respect to the second criteria, which is compatibility of design with the immediate environment of the site. And, you know, looking at four, determination that the design is compatible and areas considered by the board as having a unified design or historical character, here, personally, I think it is at a minimum appropriate for us to defer by the city council to approve the general that map, in fact, shows all the different areas within the city that are considered to have some unified identity. I don't, I don't think it means much if it doesn't mean that. apt. Although I certainly understand that's open to argument. And then I'm very mindful it's actually a very important part of the ordinance. As I read it, seeks to limit the exercise of our discretion. In fact, it's titled limitations of review. I'll note, paragraph B states that individual initiative and experimentation are to be encouraged. That, for what it's worth, and it may not be helpful here, I think clearly suggests that we're not after cookie cutter approaches. But again, C says only the proponents' failure to take justify disapproving a proposal solely on the basis of design, and design is the only thing before us. So
then there's no opportunity to deny it. You can't deny something is
that you can't deny it for any, if design is the only issue before you, the reasonably take into account the criteria we've been discussing.
Okay, so the criteria can be the, yeah. Can I say something more about really like to talk about it more in the future or get some clarification, but, you know, the neighborhood that McCorkle Avenue is in, it's not homogeneous at all. There are multifamily units there because of the zoning craziness. And there are single-family homes, the large, very expensive ones, and there are very small, you know. So I don't think that something in that neighborhood map is necessarily showing anything
of a policy that is related to the direction as yet unimplemented to staff and commission to develop neighborhood-based design review criteria. So when we go through that process of amending the design review ordinance, which will involve, I, I'll be honest, I kind of shudder at the thought in setting out 24 separate sets of design review guidelines, one for each neighborhood. The McCorkle neighborhood that's shown on the map will be a neighborhood that gets a single set of design review guidelines, whatever those look like. So, and that's significance of the neighborhood map. It is a determination that those are the neighborhoods that have some defining character. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're uniform. Review criteria.
Now, is this map from the 93 general plan?
No, it's from the new general plan.
Well, then we're supposed to be looking plan, because that's when the application was made?
Yes.
I think we are. You don't have to
definition that I'm relying on, I'm
I don't think we should use, well, anyway, the other thing I wanted to say, though, I remember when we were doing the short-term rental and we were defining neighborhood, we were talking about neighborhood. And I remember that the adjacent neighbors and neighbors directly across the street were considered the most important aspect of the neighborhood when addressing this because they had special, special rights of opposition to other neighbors that were living further away. So I but that that was one time when we did define a neighborhood as your adjacent neighbors and people across the street. So I think it's all over the map. And, you know, I think since we don't, we're not supposed to be considering the maps from the new general plan, that I don't, you know, I'm not sure is those maps as a criteria?
If I could offer something here that may help. One, we seem to be discussing A2. word neighborhood, or even imply the word neighborhood. It says immediate environment of the site. I would suggest immediate environment of the site.
Have any disagreement about that?
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to look at neighborhood definitions in the new general plan, or whatever there was in the old general plan that talks about neighborhoods. We simply have to look at the immediate environment of the site.
Which is also arbitrary, but I tend to agree with what you
I don't think it's any more than a couple of blocks. And I think one could easily make the argument it's, it's if we're down to that, and going to the
Well, if that's the only criteria on the list that is at issue, if you will, then the question becomes
You don't, does that mean, can I interrupt you for a minute?
No.
Okay, sorry.
At this point, you can't. You can come back.
Okay.
But I'm going to finish.
Okay.
If that's the only criteria at issue, or is otherwise critical to the decision, then the question becomes whether or not the failure of the design to satisfy that criteria constitutes
Failure to take reasonable account.
Of the roughly 20 criteria that the
would think your question about when the applicant became aware of these design criteria and to that. And I didn't hear from the applicant saying architect used the design criteria to design this place. Unfortunately, to my eye, this sticks out like a
Just number two is the only one. Does that mean that the, I mentioned one, two, three, four. How many of these apply? Or do, or is my opinion about these other criteria only significant if everyone agrees with them? I'm not sure, because you just said number two. Personally, I think
I was responding to Commissioner Pont, who said that things turned on number two. The determination you have to make is, in effect, whether or not the applicant reasonably took into account well, I'll give you a chance to speak, but when I invite you to speak, then you must come to the podium and speak at the microphone, please. So in, to me, one of the things that stands out about this whole structure is that it's not a list of findings. It doesn't say in the zoning ordinance where that's exactly what we have to do. We have a set of findings to make for use permits. We have a set of findings, we required findings for approval. There's only a required finding for denial. So I think is that to our collective judgment, how to weigh them. Perfect accord with all of them.
But if we feel that there are too many to, I mean, there are enough to support a denial, we can
All you have to find to make the denial is that the applicant further guidance as to what that means.
And that's an individual thing for each commissioner.
That's up to each and every one of us.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I will reopen the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak. Please come up.
I just a matter of opinion, you know. I mean, I don't think the house would stick out like a sore thumb. That's my opinion. As far as historical context, just going back to that, we had to have a historical consultant review this. And they did not find it to be historical. I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of the existing house. I, or the ones across the street. Honestly, this is such a big improvement over what is there, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The public hearing's been reopened, so I'll invite anyone else who wishes to speak to come. It's not generally my practice to I'm stuck. On the question of consultation between the applicant or the applicant's representatives and staff regarding the design
Look, this is a one-month assignment in January, well after the project had been designed and accepted as complete. I have spoken with the project architect and he was very familiar with the zoning code. This is not his first project in this community. So our criteria is the zoning code and the general plan. And the zoning code allows exactly what is being proposed here. So
Thank you. That is helpful, even though we lack
There's no light coming.
And I'm going to be honest, given the way the ordinance is written, I'm hard pressed to reach the conclusion that, in working through the process over this extended period of time with staff, that the applicant failed F. And I'm always say the problem is one that could be framed in terms of inadequate or say the problem is one that could be framed in terms of inadequate or inadequate direction or misdirection. But for us to find that the applicant failed to take those criteria into account in a context in which staff is telling us, as they've undoubtedly told the applicant that they find the project consistent, presents a problem of some kind in our process. I'm not sure of what kind. And, you know, that's, that's my dilemma here, but sometimes that's just how it goes. So, I've said everything useful I can say. I don't know if anyone else has anything to say, or if we're
I just have a few things to, to sort of tidy consideration and taking in consideration in a positive light are two different things. This house is about twice as large as the houses in the immediate neighborhood area. It area. This will it area. It, it fails that test completely. Goes through and keeps on going. If it was shorter, it is even larger than the average house being built in California today. This is a large house on a small lot. Lots. I think it's a clean miss, no matter how you look at it. And I understand, and am somewhat troubled, like you are, by getting so far into the process and then saying, wow. But if this one is deemed to meet the criteria as written, I can't think of any structure anywhere in San Alina of any size or shape, as long as it fits into the construction envelope, that would fail to meet the criteria.
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty troubled My, my question would be, you know, how much, how much taller is this than the house that's directly behind it? How much taller is this than the house that's directly to the right of it? I mean, the house that's directly behind it is two stories, and I'm also troubled, and kind of agree with Lester in the, the quandary here is, like, if and each of us may have some, some number that we feel like that put that, you know, if we, we were picking out, somebody pointed out too, even if we all agree pass rate. You know, I think John's comments didn't, you know, it doesn't, sticking out like a sore thumb isn't, isn't, isn't a criteria specifically on Right, but, but what I'm saying is, you know, I think we have to really haven't met the, the criteria for denial, and we send, we send this back, and we've, we've delivered good, good cause for an appeal. You know, I think it's, I think it's, I think we should take that very seriously. You know, and I, I think it, it does kind of come down to doing, doing the math. I mean, if I I'd have a hard time arguing that they didn't, you know, substantially consider the, the criteria before them. Because it doesn't, it doesn't say that they have to
I think that's a, a good point, but I, I think it's applying apples to oranges, or whatever the saying is, to quinces. There is no objective standard. A medication has certain drawbacks. You could have 10 drawbacks, but the one it has causes, you know, may cause a heart attack, or, you know, a stroke. I'm feeling itchy, so I, you I, I don't think they can be weighed there, at least at the time. They're not being weighed objectively in any to something inappropriately. I don't, you know, if, if, yeah, so.
So much larger than any house immediate adjacent to it.
Not true.
Well, it's the one behind it, yeah, but I'm not so sure that counts as
Well, the one three doors, the one three doors up is larger.
Besides, that one's pretty much new, right?
What, the one behind it?
Yeah.
That's probably 30 years old. I don't know.
So, I mean
It's half as, half as new as it's, these other neighbors.
When you drive down the street, you don't look at the house on the next block.
Wow.
On which a house larger than is being built on average in the state of California sits in the middle.
And there is a community expression right here in this that is concerned about the proliferation of large houses on small lots, not just the immediate neighbors, but people who, you know, live, you know, anywhere near there, or even people who don't live near the community. Again, it's very subjective, it's not objective, it's difficult to measure, but there were many neighbors who, who spoke up. And I, I think that, again, it's the democratic process here. If an appeal is appropriate, if someone doesn't like the opinion, they can appeal. That's and I do think it's extremely important to have an ear to the community about what, what comes before us. I'm not saying they should necessarily always prevail, but I think we really need to, to fit feeling and a character, a neighborhood character, so.
Weight to the community voice if the neighbors who actually live in those houses came up and made these complaints, you know? Breering houses are owned by the folks, or the, that the folks that wrote the letters don't live in them. I don't, I don't think that's relevant, any more than the other, the other argument.
You mean the renters coming would be as valid for you as the owners? Is that what you mean?
Well, no, I, I, I think I would, I would be a little more sympathetic, and I'd be a little more sympathetic to the, to the building community argument. You know, because I think part of, part of community is, is, is the folks who actually live there.
But as you said, our community is all of San Alina.
I, I, I believe that.
So the people who don't live near there do have an interest, and they have an interest
No, I, I just said, I, I don't, I don't think it's relevant. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's relevant who, who owns them. I, and I don't think, I don't think you can, I don't think we can afford, as a community, to frame these so narrowly, our neighborhoods, and
Just one voice, I don't think the community's framing it, but I think it's a very of what it says in the general plan and what it says in the criteria.
Right. The grounds for denial.
I agree respectfully to disagree.
Just one last thought I'm gonna throw out there, and I agree that we have to be respectful of community sentiment. I think it's really important that, to the extent we can, we a way that provides meaningful guidance to applicants. If, if the process evolves into something like a popularity contest, what happens is the, the terms and become virtually irrelevant. And, and that, I think, is a very bad place to go. But at the same time, there are always gonna be hard cases that challenge our ability to find the balance that I think is really important. This may be one of them. But with that said, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
That the resolution in the agenda is a resolution of approval, so any vote, if the commission should decide to vote to deny that, that motion should include
Well, if we're not ready, I'm gonna propose a five-minute break. I think that's what we needed at this point. We'll adjourn for five minutes and come back to take action.
I can see, it's close up. I can, I can see. Oh, little tiny stuff.
Oh, you can read.
That's what you get with severe myopia, is you get close, and little tiny stuff is crystal clear.
Like in Eagles.
Yeah. But out there? Nah. I would, I would have trouble telling you how many people there are in the audience.
Do you see that there are people there?
I see, well, they're people shapes, I assume they're people.
They could be cardboarders.
It could be cardboard, yes, they're, you know. Last thing that goes off at night, first thing that goes on.
And there is no way to do contacts for, for the
I can, but that's, that's even, that's even, it's an even slower process, right? You gotta go in, you gotta wet them, you gotta put them in, you gotta color them all, you know, so. I know you can't sleep in some of the new, yes, but they recommend you don't.
I know it, it's a whole concept, yeah, so.
And I, I'm, I'm even beyond parameters for laser correction.
Oh, when I get, um, out of
But you get, but you get so far out.
Oh, you mean for
Here for Chase, right? Do you have a board?
How many dinos have been given before?
Uh, seven. Oh, I've worn glasses.
Okay, so we were lucky enough to have glasses, and you couldn't play.
I broke a lot of glasses on
Were your parents, or was it just you?
No, they broke, my, my parents' glasses.
Is he different, um, height of, 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 of And is he, is he talented the same way as, as you are, or does he have a different kind of talent?
He's the kind of person that can sell refrigerator sets.
And is that not the talent that he has to do?
Uh, no. No.
Which, which are consumable.
He's totally blind down here. If it wasn't correctable, I would be blind.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We're still on agenda item 5.1, and I believe we're waiting for a motion.
I would move that we direct project.
I second.
Ms. Camaro.
Vice Chair Pont.
Yes.
Commissioner Monet.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hardy.
Yes.
That brings us to item 5.2, project at 899 for demolition permit and design review. Mr. Augustin, I believe this is yours also.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'll try to be brief. This is a property, little over an acre, at the corner of Dowdel Lane and Lafata Street in the industrial district. It's essentially an application for demolition permit to scrape the site, remove everything, and start from scratch with two new buildings. One's a two-story building that has a combination of a shop on the ground floor and offices, labs, and administrative functions on the second floor. And the other building is a combination shop and warehouse set forth in the zoning code have been met or exceeded. We've worked out some details on it, came to an agreement, and added three parking spaces. So the project meets all of the parking requirements as amended, and they have an amended site plan in your packet. As far as the general plan is concerned, it conforms for agriculture use and viticulture. And we have put that explains what it is that he's proposing to do. And this is basically going to be offices and buildings and shops and labs for coppercane wines and provisions. It is a local farm architect and can answer any specific questions that you have. But staff is of the opinion that all of the required development standards have been met or exceeded, and we recommend approval set forth in the resolution and the conditions of approval. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Guston. Are there any questions for staff?
Just one. Chris, on A1.10. The furthest southwest corner, or at least going by the, not true directions, but by the directions, those three little boxes, are those three parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's where
Those are the
That's where the three
Freeway picked up.
I kept counting and kept coming up short, and then I noticed those three boxes. And they weren't numbered, didn't have cars in them. I just wanted to make sure those are parking spaces.
We worked with the applicant, and it was very gratifying, the response that we had to all of the questions and concerns. And we figured this all out in a matter of a day and a half. And in order to get this but they're there, they're legal, they fit.
Three boxes, and they were unnumbered, so I wasn't sure.
We felt, as a traffic engineer, you'd pick right up on that.
Well, they were the right
And I was wondering, I don't know if this is for you or the applicant, but I was wondering, I couldn't tell, are there gonna be
Would be better to address that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming, looking for confirmation, Mr. Guston, that the, all of the proposed uses are permitted uses and that the net from the zoning district, or do we have elements of this, say, for example, parking calculations that are tied to specific permitted uses?
No, they're tied to very general uses. The shops and warehouses have a specific parking requirement, and the office administrative functions have a specific parking requirement. If at some point in time there was a proposed change of use, then we would readdress the parking requirements for any proposed change of use.
Okay, so the approval is for the uses as proposed.
That's correct, and the proposed uses are consistent with the range of uses permitted in both the general plan and the zoning code.
Very good, thank you. Saying that, I'll invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the project.
My name is Joe Wagner. I am the owner and winemaker of Coppercane Wines and Provisions. We started in 2014. We currently make wine in Rutherford. Offices are located just outside of St. Helena. To grow as we continue to grow. And this property came up for sale, 899 Dowdel Lane, and had a lot of interest for us. As you may know, it's an engineered steel building. It does not support all the functions that we're looking for. A lot of the site currently is used not just the growth that we need and the support functions we need for our area. So as you may see with the architecture here, it is very industrial, but what came forth from Signum Architecture when for the workspace, a lot of south-facing slopes on the roof for a solar array. also sustainability. So we talked a little bit about how we came up with this. You know, we do have some accessory uses we need outside of our winery operations and vineyard operations. And coming up with a plan, working within the boundaries of what the zoning is, came up with, I think, a great use of this site. So let's see, it's about 1.6 acres in total. We are looking to do it all with local designers and builders, which we've had great relationships with over the years. The overall building height is relatively low. Call sawtooth or industrial roof. And let me see here. I think that's pretty much it for the site. I'd love to take your questions and answer them.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Do a green demolition, in the sense of, when you're taking down what's there, is there any way to get as much recycling as possible and to do it in a way that, you know, will possibly make use of what's being torn down in some, if possible? I don't know if you thought of that or
Under state building codes, that all has to be several years ago.
All right, thank you. I didn't know that. So then answer that question.
Thank you, no, I was not aware of that.
So are the other, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I was also gonna answer your earlier question. We are not
Would you consider having those available to the community? Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to the commission on this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commission?
Cool building.
I like the solar panel.
Any further discussion, or is this
Seems like a great project.
Okay, I'm sensing we're ready for a motion already.
It's a new record.
I don't want to cut anybody off.
And accept the required findings and approve the demolition permit and the design review.
Ms. Camaro.
Vice Chair Pott.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Using ones. Thank you.
Thank you. It's your birthday party tonight, so here we go.
Scheduled matters and Item 6.1. Half of Citibank for approval of a resolution granting a sign permit for new signage at And this is Ms. Camaro's.
The subject property is located in the central business zoning district and is the former location of Citibank. In November 2018, an application for design review was approved by the planning commission to allow a complete remodel of the building's exterior and interior with site improvements to the location. Building permits for the remodel were issued July this year. A total of four signs and two ATMs are proposed for the new Chase bank location. The applicant proposes two non-projecting halo-illuminated identification signs on the primary and secondary frontage of the building. The signs are approximately the blue logo. The front and white LEDs will be mounted to the backs to create a halo illumination effect. The signs will measure approximately five and a half square feet and will be located on the east and west sides of the rear parking lot. frontage of the building. The ATMs will have a blue LED stripe around the perimeter to provide the halo-lit effect against the back panel. No illumination is proposed for the accent panel or the Chase letters and logo. Require additional discussion. And as the completion For the reasons stated above, staff recommends that the planning commission determine that the signs are exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15311 and approve a resolution granting sign permit approval for the new signage at 1399 Railroad Avenue. And I have the applicants here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Camaro. Are there any questions for staff?
I have one. Do you happen to know why the halo lights are not part of lighting that is part of
Of internally illuminated sign states that internally illuminated sign means a sign which is illuminated from a lighting source within the internal structure of the sign which illuminates the entire face of the sign, does not include neon signs or halo-illuminated signs.
Right, I mean, okay, so that's just, you don't know why those signs are exempt
They're not considered internally illuminated.
But we still need to consider. I have another question.
I just have one question of staff. Can we be consistent on direct I mean, on the last staff is driving north-south. This one is not following, this one's gone the other way around. So when I think of 29 as north-south, which is pretty and it's calling 29 east-west.
Right.
Can we be consistent in view It's not the actual orientation, it's more like northwest. But if we could follow 29 as north, that way the building doesn't get turned around backwards and you have to think about it the other way.
We will do our best to do that, and I agree, that's how I like to do it as well.
Cool. That's my only question of staff.
My other question was, is this illumination going to be 24/7, or is it going to be going off at 10 o'clock? Or Oh, there is, I didn't see that then, my bad. Is that
It does say that the signs authorized by the sign permit have to conform to the plans that are before you, but we can add that condition. We can add that as a condition if you'd like.
Okay, would that include the ATMs? The sign permit?
That's right.
Up to you guys.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions of project proponent.
We're done with questions for staff?
No, these are for the
Applicants' representative to speak.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Ford. I'm representing the signed contractor on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the spot, signage.
Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Pott.
How many lumens?
But it's usually the lumens that they provide us from the manufacturer, and it's unshielded. Typically, halo illumination is not going to be very bright.
Can be, I'm not 100% comfortable approving a halo-illuminated sign that may be 10,000 lumens. I have, there's no restrictions if we approve this as written. And I've got a problem with that.
Okay.
We have no idea how bright it is.
I guess we could suggest that we could, and this has come up in other jurisdictions that have some lighting restrictions, we can install a if, you know, if the commission wants to re-review it or let staff review it, or if there's complaints from the public about the brightness, they can always dim it there without us having to actually go out and make any modifications.
That's probably acceptable. On the, let me get to the right page. On the color line LED border tube, I'm reading on page 10 of your drawing. Profile similar to neon, and once again, no idea how bright, super-bright is. Ordinance allows neon but frowns at it. Well, I'm reading what it says about the lighting. Well, that doesn't have to do with, that doesn't have anything to do with brightness. So I'm a little kinky about super-bright
Kinky?
And profile similar to neon. How bright is super-bright?
Well, I think that that's probably a marketing slogan for them, simply because they would not want to advertise it as not bright.
And it could be true, too.
Yeah, but we need to know.
Right, I guess, I mean, we can get information on it, but again, the manufacturer can only provide lumens which is unshielded. So in other words, once this is installed and it's a halo lighting, there is an example on page nine of what the effect looks like. Again, this is a sign that can, you know, these signs, every sign will be hooked into the dimmer, so again, if it's too bright, it can be dimmed, but, you know, we could always take readings once the signs are installed. Where those ATM machines are located, the actual lighting, like there's exterior lighting that's going to be on lighting from these surrounds.
Also, this says it's in a tube, is that correct? The LEDs are in a tube?
It, let's see. Strip, I guess it's, it's in the shape of a tube, you can
For the one around the ATM machine.
Yeah, this is only for the one that's around the ATM.
Yeah, that's all I'm concerned about, that's what these series of questions are about. If they're in tubes, that may be a
Because it's not enclosed.
Our code doesn't allow enclosed lights.
This is, this is, it's going to be tucked in behind, so you're not actually going to see the tube itself. But if it, if it can't be a tube, like if it has to be a strip instead of a tube, they can do that. It's just, they're, this is, this is just the shape lights and it's just a wire that goes between them. They can do that, this is, they're just It's going to be kind of, it's going to be tucked in, I mean, it's, it's not even visible, so I don't know if
Well, I'm, I'm reading tube, 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 but it, you know, once the plastic cap is attached to the cut side, the tube will finish at. It, it sort of reads to me like the LEDs are inside a tube.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, what, I guess what they're saying, this is, it's considered an LED border tube. The idea is that this, the design of this would be made to look like neon if you were to go with like an exposed neon. That's the, you know, that's kind of the design of this, so it's easier to mount on the inside. If it can't be a tube, that's not a problem, they can use exposed LED lights that are not mounted into a tube and insert, you know, basically mount those on the back. That's just, that's just this particular product which is what they use.
I'm, I'm beginning to wonder how ready this project is. You don't know how bright, the that you don't know how bright it is. I'm, you know, I've, I've, I've got no problem with the if you can't tell me how, how bright the illumination is. And if you can't tell me how bright the illumination is on the halo, you can't tell me how bright it is on the tube. And you presented a tube sign is at the present time.
Okay.
Experience with it, but you said that, you know, that you could dim the light if, if the public or someone didn't like it. Is there a protocol for that? Who, who determines that? The plan? How does that work?
Typically, typically commission, some commissions want it to be, come back to them in six months for review. Others will just assign it to staff. And it, it just depends on how you want to do it, but it's, it's really
Thank you, I didn't have an idea at all, so.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, what you're saying is that we can't get those answers tonight, so it'd be very difficult to vote on it if we don't have those answers tonight. Can we condition it in some way that would be?
Our code prohibits enclosed, you know, lights in enclosed structures, right? I'm, I'm assuming that hasn't changed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we've got, your presentation is, is for a sign we couldn't approve because it doesn't meet our
A structure where the LEDs are mounted on it and then a plastic cap gets snapped over the top.
Yeah, it looks like it's an enclosed structure. Yeah. I realize you can change that, but that's not what we've got.
Does the ordinance talk Would that make a difference? In, in whatever the reason is for the ordinance, it must be a safety issue, I would assume.
It's to not have big glow
Well, the The commission can decide whether to act or not. The commission can condition the approval to require an ordinance compliant LED strip where the application shows a tube. The applicant to come back with more information, but I think there is a choice here. I think it, in fact, either way you look at it, we have a decision to make.
I think that maybe if the applicant could, it's easier for you to have a conditioned approval or to come back and maybe we could adapt to.
I would think a condition of approval, but I, not knowing what the condition, I mean, there, there's some flexibility in how this is designed, I would just need some direction, like if it can't come in a tube, but it can come in strips, that's not a problem. It's just, I don't know what those conditions would be and if it's something we could feasibly do.
I mean, I, I could go for that, but I mean, it'd be nice to have a complete application. You know, how bright are they? Are they legal? You know. You apparently want 724-365?
I think that would be the idea because typically the letters and the logo on the top of the ATMs would be illuminated to let people know that they're open and operational when the bank is closed. In this case, because we change that to be not illuminated, so the only part of the ATM that's really going to illuminate is this border dark, people may think that they're not open to be
So we would need three changes in the resolution. One that says not only shall go off at night, but the brightness shall be considered and set by planning staff?
Permit and then administrative review acceptable to planning staff.
That the, the lights around the ATM should be compliant with our code. And once again, to also be on a dimmer. Okay. And the third one being that the lights around the ATM can remain on continuously?
Question, the, on the page two, it says all illuminate signs was returned off, they closed the business.
I'm going to have to waive that to get the lights around the ATM. Will the ATMs also have incidental
Yeah, there's, I believe that there is, usually there's requirements, I think it's the state that, that requires a bit or something like that that shine down on it, so there is, there is some external lighting, I guess, on the ATMs.
Are there more questions for the applicants? You can have a seat. Oh, wait a minute, is this when I open the public hearing? Open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak? Nope. Public hearing closed. Anything else that anyone wishes to discuss?
It sounds good. The way it's been described, I'm okay with it.
Didn't we set a lumens limit on the new signs in the Sunshine parking lot? I was trying to look that up and I couldn't remember, but I think we set a condition for those as well.
I remember one of them had too many and we, we reduced it by 50%, I recall.
Well, I, I'll be honest with you, I rather like the dimmer switch and the ability for staff to respond to how it actually works when it's there. Since what you see. It's going to be indicative for sure, but
I would prefer if in the future we had numbers.
I just, as I say, I think having the ability regardless of what information we have about numbers to dial it down does make a lot of sense.
I would also feel more comfortable at this point if we would set like a max
If I can jump in, I, I think part of the issue with the, I mean, because we're talking about the, the
The big halo signs on the
On the, the Chase letters?
Yeah.
Behind solid numbers don't necessarily reflect, aren't, aren't, I mean, I'm, what I'm saying is if, if you set, it's kind of arbitrary because and there's not, there's not data out there that's, you know, that for specific to every, for, I mean, for obvious reasons, to every, for every type of letter. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is it would be more practical to allow staff, put them, put them on a dimmer, allow staff to make that determination. I, I trust staff to do that and if, and if, you know, I'm, I'm sure that the public will do that properly. You know, I'm, I'm just saying that I think coming up with a number would be a bit arbitrary.
I would suggest that we've done this for other signs. That we could just do a not to exceed like the, like the halo signs on they had how much lumens each LED put out. And we requested they cut out a bunch of those, so it wasn't set a top limit on it. If I remember right, they were over 16,000 lumens. Which would be 10 hundred watt bulbs. But we want to be, I don't think any larger than we were
And I, and I also think numbers can be arbitrary and not necessarily that helpful. I, I don't know how easy it would be to do what you're saying, to set tonight, to decide what lumens that should be and what, you know, maybe that's something that we need to do in terms of a city ordinance in the future.
You're saying we've done it before.
Well, maybe we could leave it open, I, I don't know, but it's seem, I would like to see it go forward tonight with the, with the conditions that we have and then you know, maybe if there's, I, I don't know if, if we need those numbers, but
I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for not to exceed, but, all right.
Well, maybe there'd be a way to put that as a condition.
These are, they're calling these channel letters, meaning their, their channel is to the back. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the channel letter just by definition is, it's got a front, it's got a side that's got a depth to it, so they're individually Normally it would face out the front, which would be an acrylic face and light up, in this case, the front and sides are all aluminum, so the, the channel's actually on the back of it, which is where the light would come out of.
Right, and the tube And the tube is in the channel.
The tube is in like an inch and a half or something off the wall, so nobody could theoretically even see the lighting exposed because you don't have an inch and
Right, right, it's shooting Yeah, I, my recollection on the, as opposed to the one wall, the letter itself was just I mean, I'm, I remain perfectly comfortable with just saying that staff administration see that it's a problem.
Well, I'm fine with moving forward on this with the resolution modified as outlined by Commissioner Pont, but in thinking about lumens and numbers and signs we've approved and what I see on the street, it does seem to me that it would be really helpful if at some point we had and you know, had information, a report from staff about specific sign approvals, the information that we had about the lighting with lumens, if we had information about lumens, with the limits, if we set limits. And the ability to talk about what brightness and which do not, so that to be honest, with respect to the numbers, I'm like a blindfolded man throwing a dart. I don't know what the numbers mean, I'm just, it's, I'm out of my wheel process enough and there are enough signs out there with current ability to come back with some inform so that we can establish a consistent set either of commission, practice, of an amendment to the We can all respond to these questions when they come up with confidence that, that we know what to expect based on the information in front of us and when to modify it and when not to. So I, I like that idea a lot.
I think that's an excellent idea, particularly since our sign code has now changed that each and every one of these that we approve is a one-off.
Yeah, understood.
You know?
And I, I, I think that that emphasizes the value in, in coming back, I'll our director, I'll talk about how we might schedule that. In the meanwhile, unless I'm mistaken, we should be ready for a motion.
I move the motion as modified by me.
Ah, perfect, perfect. Alliterative even. Is there a second in the House?
I'll second it.
Oh, I heard one, I heard one.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
And Chair Hardy?
Yes. Now, I'm going to double Now, I'm going to double check my agenda, let's see. Okay, that's a link directed to our attention. This meeting is. Um, we were just talking about meeting.
Yeah, I, we definitely have several items on for November 17th, December 30th. Second meeting in December would be the 17th and I believe we will have a meeting that day, unless the commission would like to try and reschedule those for the 3rd and potentially cancel the meeting on the 17th.
Well, what do you think you have on, I mean, how mu, how much of an agenda is it?
I think all of them are locals, so I think they would be fairly easy to move and potentially would be appreciated due to the pending holiday season, but we, we can, we can see how this goes over the next couple of weeks.
Be easy for us? Are you kidding?
Before anyone says anything else, adjourned.